It is January 8th, 2013. It is a work session tonight for the North Kingstown School Committee. I'm going to ask everyone to rise and say the pledge of the flag. After we say the pledge of the flag, we're going to take a short moment of silence to remember Joe Fagan, who retired in June, who was a custodian here at the high school. So, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Lorraine, if you could call the roll, please. Linda Avanzato.
Here.
John Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Howes.
Dana Larkin.
Here.
Thank you. Lorraine, if you could do the calendars, please. January 9th, Democracy Night, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, North Kingstown High School Cafeteria. January 11th, Policy Subcommittee Meeting, 8:30 AM, Central Administration Building. January 14th, CILAC Meeting, 6:00 PM, Central Administration Building. January 15th, School Committee Budget Meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School Auditorium. January 21st, Martin Luther King Day, Schools and Offices Closed. January 22nd, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School. January 28th, Professional Development Day, No School for Students. January 29th, Wellness Committee Meeting, 3:30 PM, Stony Lane School. Thank you. All right, Dr. J, you want to start us off with our presentations?
Sure. I would like to, why don't we, should we go up to the front? Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to start this evening by commending John Campbell and John Casey. They are two students at the high school, two seniors, I believe, right? Why don't you come on up, guys? John and John have, I'm going to read from my script here, they're two Comm. 3, Communications 3 students.
Yep.
Okay. And they've made the final round of the Stop Bullying Video Challenge. They need our support. Actually, the voting's already been done, if I understand.
Yep.
So, there's been national voting on this, and they're waiting for the results from the U.S. Department of Defense Schools. And the voting is open until Monday. Well, that's already taken care of. But, so, this is work that they've done with, you know, it's a great video, you're going to see it in a few minutes. So, if you're sitting along this wall, by the way, you might not come to the front and middle here so you can see it, because we're going to project it up here. But I'm going to let John and John talk a little bit about the process and what went into it before you begin.
Okay. Well, my name is John Casey.
And I'm John Campbell.
And earlier on in the year, we were given different projects we could choose from for the beginning of Comm. 3. And we decided to do the Stop Bullying Video Challenge, because we thought it'd be a nice project to, you know, showcase what we know about bullying and what we think we can do to prevent it. And before we do any more talking, we'll show you the video quick.
And John Casey used to play a lot of wiffle ball in my backyard, so I taught him everything he knows. How about we sit down and then we'll deal with it right when we do it.
I've been bullied my whole life for my decisions, for my opinions, for my thoughts, and for my words. And all I ever wanted was for someone to stand up for me. I've been in situations where I was being bullied and people just kept ignoring my feelings, completely ignoring what was happening. But you, you, you can be the change. If you see someone bullying or... Outside school, being bullied. By nature of the law. Tell them everything you saw to help the victim. You can also try creating a distraction to their threat for reasons of bullying. If you know someone who's being bullied. You can spend time doing the first thing that people... But even just talking to them. Let them face about anything. They are experiencing whatever is being experienced. Don't make them feel so much better about themselves. Bullying is more than just a huge issue in this country unless you become a change. You can be the change, be more than a bystander. Thank you very much. Well, when we started the video at first, we actually had a lot more planned for it. We were going to have more people than just me, him, Dan Karamatze, who was the boy with the curly head, and...
Christina, Chris, the girl.
And it didn't really, like, pan out as well as we hoped it would. And, you know, going back and looking at it now, it was a very good message. There are a few, you know, technical things we would like to change with it, like the actual quality of the video. But bullying is an issue in Rhode Island and the country alone. I mean, it's not so much in North Kingstown, but I still see it, you know, every day. And, you know, like I said, we decided it'd be a good idea to make this video just to show everyone in NK and, you know, hopefully everyone at the high school, that, you know, you can be more than a bystander, in different ways you can be more than a bystander.
For the contest, it was a national contest all over the country. And, I guess, okay. And it was, out of the 900 submissions, we ended up making it up to the top seven. And for the contest, there were, for the first-place winner is $2,000, second-place winner gets, second and third-place winners get $500 each. And out of the 900, we ended up in the top seven. And after the voting, we were supposed to find out on December the 20th whether we were in the top three or not. And, but what ended up happening was they started having technical difficulties with their, with their voting, with their voting count, with their voting counts. And so, we won't be able to know until the 15th of this month how far we've gotten.
Yep. We weren't the only group to do it, too. There was another group of juniors, Christian Hopt and Jack Gojer, who also did the video. But, as you can see, ours only made it to the top seven. But theirs was still very well put together. And we honestly thought that theirs was going to make it at least semifinals, and ours wasn't even going to make it. So, we can, we were pleasantly surprised, to say the least, that we made it to the finals.
Well, congratulations, and we have some certificates for you guys here this evening. Congratulations. Thank you, guys.
Dr. J, I believe you have the next item in the discussion.
Yeah, you know, after the tragedy in, at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, obviously, you know, those of us who are educators and just, you know, people in general, people with kids in the schools, you know, our police, you know, so many people from our community have come together, many have emailed me, I know many have been emailing Chief Mulligan, our principals, about the kinds of things that we do in our district for security. And, because I don't think there was any community in the country that wouldn't think that, you know, that could happen in their own community, that Sandy Hook had some similar security measures, in fact, to some of the, to all of the schools in North Kingstown. So, there are, you know, a lot of similarities. And so, I knew that the community would probably want to spend a little bit of time tonight talking about, you know, what's going on in our district in terms of our security measures and our protocols, and learn a little bit about the kinds of things that we do on a regular basis, and will continue to do. And so, I want to share a little bit of information with you about that tonight. I want to thank all of our principals for coming out tonight. This is something that has affected us all very deeply, and, you know, it's a part of our job that we take very seriously. And, you know, so we're, we're looking for, you know, always looking to make our schools safer. As, I know many of my fellow administrative staff were obviously in schools and administrators in schools at the time of Columbine. When that happened, just after Columbine, I became assistant principal of the high school. And I was working in high schools for years before that. And it really, obviously, moved me deeply. And I noticed in those years, the few years following Columbine, that there were many initiatives and preparation exercises that I went through in the schools that I was a part of to, you know, to update the security measures in the high schools that I was a part of. And I suspect that as we continue to learn from this latest incident, that we will continue to, continue to seek out ways that we can try to make things safer in North Kingstown and throughout the country, obviously. This is something that is being looked at by, you know, locally. I want to thank Mr. Embry and Chief Mulligan for being here tonight to help us with the, be a part of this discussion tonight. I would imagine there are some people in the audience who wouldn't mind coming to the microphone at some point in this discussion, and I would welcome you to do so. We normally do citizens' comments at the end, but I think we would be okay to include citizens' comments during this part of the discussion. And I will open the discussion just by talking a little bit about the kinds of things that we do in the district right now in terms of preparations for any kind of a crisis. We currently have, you know, many drills that our kids and staff go through on a yearly basis. In fact, every school is required to do 14 fire drills, two evacuation drills and two lockdowns. And lockdown would be similar to the kind of an exercise that would have been in place for the Newtown incident. These drills are mandated by the state, and they came into place roughly, you know, in the years after Columbine. Just on, just yesterday was our first administrative meeting since that incident, and we invited members of the North Kingstown Police Department to come and join us and to talk about the kinds of things that we could be doing better. In that discussion, we have invited the police, and the police are going to, are happy to be a part of this, to come and join us for these exercises, that they would be present to kind of see how they work. They would, you know, and this is not just like one police officer who would represent the department, but we're inviting all of the police, that, you know, people who are on their regular shift at this point would be, you know, at the school where they would be doing their shift, to have more and more of the police officers familiar with the insides of our buildings and knowing the people who are in our buildings and being, you know, that familiarity, we think, is something that will definitely help us. So, they would be on-site when we do these kinds of exercises to observe what's going on and to advise us on how to make things safer when we do these exercises. Since the incident, particularly that week following the incident, Chief Mulligan instructed his staff to be in our buildings more, have more presence in our buildings than they had been. So, you know, squad cars would pull up at the beginning of school and at the end of school. We have police officers right now who are coming into our schools on a regular basis just as part of their regular rounds, just to be a presence, just to walk the hallways, become familiar with the people in the buildings, you know, as they move on through their day. So, there is an increased presence of the North Kingstown Police in our schools. And I think it, you know, I think it's definitely helped to calm some people down, you know, to know that that presence is there. We are updating our crisis response plans. This is, you know, state law that we've had these in place for many years now, you know, how exactly we go about an evacuation, how exactly we go about a lockdown. All of these exercises, there are many moving parts, obviously, and everybody in the building has got to know exactly what their role is. And that includes the principals, secretaries, different teachers, different people in different parts of the building, the custodian for the building, and even, you know, all the way to the central office. There are roles for different people when a crisis like this happens. There's a lot of people that we need to communicate with. And so, you know, we will be going over those plans with an eye toward, you know, what has just happened and how can we, you know, do our routines better, and how can we make sure that everybody in the building knows exactly what they have to do and where they have to go when a particular exercise comes up. Obviously, it's going to be a different kind of exercise if it's an evacuation, if it's a fire drill, if it's a lockdown, or any other kind of scenario. So, we have, our head of buildings is Steve Tremblay. He has many years of experience in the Providence District. And so, in his role in the Providence District, he was also a key person for us in helping to kind of standardize these exercises throughout the district, make sure everyone is following the best practice while also fine-tuning their plans for customizing them for their own building. But, you know, and we will also be working, each crisis team at each school will be working with him and with our local police and going through the entire crisis plan with them on-site, so everybody can see, here are the exits, here's where this group of people would go if such and such a thing were to happen, and getting their opinion on what would be the best way to proceed. This is also something that is being concentrated on by Commissioner Giss in the Department of Education. She is looking at this on a state level. She has asked us for all of our crisis plans. She already has them from North Kingstown. She's asked for them from all around the district. And she's going through all, you know, with everything that she's able to learn with the state police and gathering ideas. So, there may be some measures coming from her office at a certain point that we will need to comply with. And me and everyone who watches the news knows that, you know, there are, there are, you know, this is a topic for discussion in the state legislature, and it's a topic for discussion in our federal government as well right now. So, there's a lot of action going on when something like this type of incident occurs. I'm going to pass this along. I don't know if any members of the committee want to address the issue, or if you want to open the mic at this point.
Do any committee members have any comments? Mr. Biscardin.
I would just like to thank Mr. Embry and Chief Mulligan for massaging their schedules and allowing the police officers to come into schools and be a presence and to let the kids see them, let the parents see them. And I think it's important to know that they are, it's important for them to realize that people do care. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Cerisi.
I just, ditto what Mr. Biscardin just said, and I think that part of being involved, being connected with the school community is a great concept, a community policing concept, where the students and the staff get to know the officers on a good note, and the officers as well get to know the staff and the students and the layout of the various building, facilities in the district. So, I think it's a win-win all around for everyone, so, thank you.
All right, not seeing any other hands up. I would, the committee is, has no problem, we can bring citizens' comments up to the front of the agenda, would that be fine with the committee? So, if there are any committee members who would like to say anything at this time, or... Community members, I'm sorry, yes, this is for the community, not the committee. So, please feel free to come up here to the mic. Lorraine, I don't know, do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Okay. Just come on up then, state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Sullivan, 36, Arcadia Drive. I'm calling just, or coming just with a concern, I feel that North Kingstown faces more challenges than other districts due to the two open space class, schools in the district. Both of my daughters attend Quiddnesset, and I have full confidence in the school and the district that their safety is top priority. But, as a parent, it's hard for me to think of what would have happened had someone gotten into the building and opened fire. It scares me as a parent, because our kids, I felt like, wouldn't have a fighting chance. And the teachers and the staff, there are no doors to close, there are no closets to hide the kids into. The heroic acts of those teachers at Sandy Hook were amazing. And I just really urge you to please focus attention with these two schools and really, you know, just take a little extra time as a parent. Like I said, I have full confidence, I know that you guys are doing all that you can do, and I have full confidence with Mrs. Denette and the staff over at Quiddnesset. They're fantastic. The response I got back about my concerns were right on point, and I appreciate it. And the other point I wanted to bring in was the training of substitutes, people that aren't normally in buildings, and how they are trained coming in, just knowing the safety protocol and procedures and what to do should anything ever happen when they're there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Mulligan?
Tom Mulligan, Police Chief, North Kingstown, excuse me. I was actually prepared to field a few more questions than what had been presented, but to the woman who just spoke to Quiddnesset. Principal Denette is actually one of the first principals who has contacted the police department and reached out to us, recognizing and having a little bit of knowledge of that school and the open layout there. So, we do have some of the same concerns and some of the ways to address that. And that's one of the, again, will be to all the schools as far as going through the existing plans, their evacuation routes, and what has been, already been in place for quite some time. And I know we hear different things that have gone and enacted in different communities, and I won't name those communities, but I will say that all that I heard, for the most part, has already been in place for the school, all the schools in North Kingstown, and as, whether it be cameras locking the schools. So, a lot of that is already in place. I think if anything, and I'll add the police department to the comment, is that we have to get, be more familiar with our own plans and recognizing what it is that we're, would do in, given any particular incident. A lot of those plans are made to be, to be able to plug in from one school to the next. And I won't go into particulars of them. Where they differ is in some of the layouts of the schools and things of that nature. So, again, just to put you folks at ease, that we are, we have already, as I said, reached out, Quiddnesset has reached out to us, in fact, I want to say a couple, a couple of days ago, but, and again, today. So, we will be in touch with all the schools, the police staff, and working with the principals, the teachers there, addressing some of those concerns on an individual level for each of those schools and working from there. So, I'm not sure if there's any other individual questions from the school committee, or actually anybody from the audience, I'd be more than happy to...
Now, Mr. Cerisi has a question, and I see Mr. Mudge's hand also, and a couple others.
I don't so much have a question, just a comment, or just to expand a little bit on a comment that you touched on, Chief. I think it's important for the public to know and for the community to understand that the school administration and the school committee, as well as yourself and your staff, are not going to discuss or go into great detail on some of the plans and procedures in place in a public forum for the obvious reason of that you don't want to put that information out there. And I think that the staff and the, the community, you know, has to put some trust in the school administration and in the police department as well, that the questions and concerns are being heard and they're being addressed. You know, you don't obviously want to put a safety plan, every minute detail out there in the public domain for, you know, a potential bad guy to know exactly what's going to take place step by step in response to, you know, God forbid, some tragedy of that sort. So, I think people have to understand that when they're looking for every answer and every detail, there's a reason why it's not being laid out publicly, you know?
Certainly.
Mr. Mudge?
Excuse me. Chief, some time ago, we built this school. We were supposed to have a real robust, high-tech, high-tech security system in place. That never happened, and that concerned me. Also, several years ago, we had issues at Davisville Middle School and Davisville Elementary School, that with just basically physical, people breaking in all the time, stealing, you know, stealing equipments and computers and things like that. I kind of think we need to go back and couple with the effort that you're doing, is really look at, at our whole surveillance system on the buildings, see if we need to increase those surveillance systems, hopefully in support of your, what plans you have. In addition, I would ask, do we, do you have a, I hate to say this, a lockdown plan and, you know, a preventive plan, if something happens, you got, you're all organized, you know what, you know, you're doing, not that I don't think you don't, but if somebody calls you and says, "I got a couple of coops over here," are we working with other communities to support that, or just ourselves, or...
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure by, by a lockdown plan. All the schools have an individual plan, which includes a lockdown plan.
Yeah.
So, yes, I mean, that is in place. We have, what they have, we have. So theoretically, we're all on the same page.
Does that include a response plan in case somebody, you know, did come into the building and try to do something?
Yes, a response plan as to what my personnel are to do and what school personnel are to do, yes. So, there is, everybody has a job, so to speak.
And we think the timing of that would, is pretty good, and we looked at it and we, you continue to look at that?
They'll be looked at, re-looked at, and evaluated, sure, as, days forward.
Good. I would like to hear your comments, though, on the general security, you know, of all the schools, not just from this, but also from a physical standpoint of, you know, the break-in, net trainings and things like that? If we need to really kind of address increasing the observation...
Well, it could always, it could always be increased, it wouldn't hurt to, that doesn't hurt at all. There is, there is some things in place, but all these schools are very, very large. And just take this, this school, for example, you could, yeah, I mean, is that...
Yeah, it makes me say that...
Weekends, nobody here, custodians, limited staff, on whether it be this school or another school, they're all vulnerable to vandalism, they're all vulnerable to break-in and entering.
I say that in response to another issue that a student brought to my attention about, you know, some issues that were going on in the, you know, women's room or the men's room or whatever, and that they felt that we maybe should have some cameras or something to observe people coming in and out, things like that. It was one of the students that just brought that issue up, so, I think it's something we need to, to, to explore.
Mr. Mudge, if I could address some of your concerns right now. Part of, you know, having the police come to observe, you know, our drills as we do them, and go over our plans in detail with us, and walk the buildings, and, you know, as they do that, and to have Steve Tremblay, our buildings person, as our point person, you know, what I have instructed him to do is to work with the police to get all of their suggestions on those kinds of things that you're talking about. Security cameras, even things like the locks on the doors in different rooms, gates and hallways. You know, does the door open and lock from the inside of the room, or do you have to go outside the room to lock the door? Kind of counterproductive if the bad guy's outside. You know, so all of those kinds of things, there are little issues in each school that come up, you know, and they're not the same everywhere throughout. So, I want someone as knowledgeable as Steve Tremblay to look at that, and I want him to look at that with the police and with the principal, and to hear from some of the teachers in the building, you know? So, we get, we can learn everything that we can, and then, then I would, you know, bring that, you know, whether it's in my decision-making authority to get some additional equipment, you know, on what I own, on my own, or if I need something like a larger kind of purchase or something to work with the school committee to, you know, enhance, based on their suggestions. That's, that's part of this plan.
Good.
Mrs. Avanzato? Yes, I also want to thank Chief Mulligan and Mr. Embry for coming this week and for having an increased police presence... having an increased police presence. I hope that that can continue. I'm sure you'll be probably doing a little bit more, going by the schools, which I think is great, because they're in the area anyway, so why not go by there. But I had a pretty detailed conversation with Dr. Ojai today, and you guys got right on this, I particularly appreciate that. You're already talking with one another about reviewing each plan in response to the parent at Quid. We specifically discussed today the open classroom situation, and they are specifically looking at that, and different ways that could be handled in the event of a situation. I do agree with Mr. Cerisi, not to air every little detail here, that would probably not be a great idea, but it sounds like already you have in practice or in play, looking at each plan, fine-tuning it, and we may be coming back and looking at different things that need to be done, locks that need to be added, whatever suggestions, maybe increased cameras, maybe bulletproof glass, I don't know, but after the review, we'll be taking a look at these things periodically after we hear back from you and from Mr. Tremblay. So, thank you.
Mrs. Clarken?
I just had one question to touch upon, something that Mrs. Avanzato said. While we're evaluating the plans in the various schools and trying to find what solutions we may want to implement, it seems that having some type of police presence gives parents in the district a lot of comfort while this process is ongoing. So, the one question I would have is, is the plan currently now to keep the police presence indefinitely, or have them at least be at a school at some point throughout the day? Because I think that is a deterrent and would give people peace of mind.
Yeah, I mean, the police presence is just an increased patrols to the schools. Now, typically, the town is broken down at their areas, and there are schools in the patrol area. So, those officers have times, yeah, they've actually just been instructed to increase their presence at the schools. So, whether it be passing through the schools, they make, stopping in, checking in with the different principals, being there at school arrival times or departure times. So, in their course of doing what they're doing throughout the town, they've been instructed to make an extra effort to stop in and visit with the schools. And that is, that's not me telling them to do, explaining it or writing it down for them, but, I mean, they're all seasoned officers, they're dependable, and they're to act on their own as part of their patrol duty. Again, they don't have a list of things that I've given them to do, but that simple instruction is enough for them to, you know, to get out there and to make themselves visible, make themselves familiar with the school grounds. They all are, for the most part, anyway. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, unfortunately, they do a lot of patrolling on the exterior, they're not always all that familiar with the inside of the school. We do have the luxury of having a SRO, a school resource officer with the high school. Several of those have worked even in the schools as a dare officer, or even as an SRO previously with each of the schools. So, a good portion of the personnel are familiar with the various schools, but again, I don't want that presence to be, it's not a daily, it's not a presence from the start to finish, but they are asked to step it up as far as making their visits in rounds to the schools, so.
So, you just see that continuing in the near future?
It'll be, yeah, I'll say yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, my kind of town manager, both my sons are in the system, I think we don't want to get into too many particulars as far as the who, what, when, where, how, and why. The increased police presence and patrols will continue, because as we, you know, we don't want people paying too much attention to what's happening and when, just as a safety precaution, as Mr. Cerisi said. A lot of this, we're going to keep under the radar, but I think people should be, should understand, especially the public, that I remember a number of years ago, policies that were put into place here were probably ahead of their time in many respects. And I also remember when the cameras were proposed for the buildings, there were members of the public who poo-pooed that, but now looking at it, certainly was looking forward on the part of the administration and the school committee. So, as the chief mentioned, when you look at other communities, we were ahead of those other communities as far as looking at the safety of our schools a number of years ago. And I think that should reassure the public, number one, and number two, there are a lot of things that are going to occur that, not going to be on the front pages of the newspaper, but everyone's aware, and there's cooperation with everyone to make sure that there's a continued eyes on and present.
Mr. Cerisi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last quick comment, as Mr. Embry stated.
No.
With each unfortunate tragedy, I think you have cities and towns and states reviewing their policies and procedures that they have in place and making amendments as they may or may not feel necessary. And as Mr. Embry said, those are the types of things that's happened in the past with, you know, the Columbine tragedy, the Virginia Tech tragedy, things of those, that nature, always, I think, makes any rational and responsible person pause and think and reassess and take a look at their own policies and procedures that they have in place. And that's what we've continually done, and that's what we'll continually do as we go forward. And we've made changes in response to those tragedies and response to those reassessments, as Mr. Embry said, you know, surveillance cameras, locks, door buzzers, ID cards for staff, and so on and so forth, you know, those are things that have been in place for a number of years. And as Mr. Embry said, as well, well ahead of a lot of what, not to belittle other districts, but we have been a step ahead of ourselves as far as the safety and security concerns have gone, and that's a good thing, you know, and we'll continue to reassess those things and make the changes and recommendations that come forward. And, you know, it has been a very collaborative relationship between town hall and the police department and the school department whenever it comes to safety and security issues concerning the children in the school department. So, I, you know, I've always been very impressed by the way that everyone's come together and worked together when it comes to those types of issues. So, thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, too, for you coming here today, for also for our principals and other folks who have come here. You know, I was in Dr. Ojai's office the morning that we had heard this happened, and it was one of those things that starts making you start reassessing everything you've done. But I did have a parent who came up to me last week and spoke specifically about the cameras and the door locks, and he said that he hadn't been very much against this when it first come in, and he said to me, you know, he said, "I'm eating crow now." He said, "It was the best thing we could have done, I agree, I'm glad we went there." He said, "I'm glad you didn't listen to me at that time." And I thanked him because I appreciated just hearing that from that particular individual. I also have been impressed with how the, our schools have reacted to the recent tragedy and that, and putting together the snowflakes. I know at the high school, I think they raised over $1,400 for some things, and some of the things that the kids have done to bring things together. And so, I thank the community and for our principals for working together with the students to convey what has happened to them. I read a couple of the listservs and, from principals who sent things out, and I was very moved about how people responded to our parents and what was sent out to them. So, I thank you for your response in that. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other recognitions before we go off of this topic to bring up at this time? I know, I did want to just mention the North Kingstown View, and that we had our own Donna Sweet was on the cover about the blood program that they have here at the high school, where the students and staff donate blood. And they also had an article in here on the Current Wave. So, if you haven't had time to read your North Kingstown View, pick it up.
Good.
Kim? Yes, Mrs. Avanzato? Just wanted to make one quick note. I'm sure Dr. Ojai is aware that North Kingstown has another Horatio Alger Scholar. Have we discussed this at all? Did you, were you aware of that?
I was not aware.
Yes, North Kingstown has another Horatio Alger Scholar, which is an extremely, just an excellent award and very rare. I don't know how many in the country, somewhere in the neighborhood of several hundred in the whole country, I believe. And so, I'm sure we'll be discussing that further at a meeting.
I'm sure we will.
Okay.
Wonderful news.
You're not going to reveal who it is right now, I take it?
I'm having trouble remembering the student, and I knew you were going to go there.
Well, it'll come up at a future meeting, so.
I thought maybe Phil would know or had heard, but it just happened, so.
Okay.
Mr. Gent?
I know we have a lot of student athletes who get various recognitions, so I'll be remiss, you know, that we can't point them all out, but I do believe we had a high school student who was selected as an NSCAA All-American player, I think Madison Dong. So, that's quite a great recognition for her to be selected as an All-American.
Great.
That is great.
We're on to superintendent's reports, if there's nothing else?
I'm all set for it now.
All right, that brings us to routine items. The first item that we have, I should say, is the executive session. Do I have a vote to, a motion, I should say, a motion to seal the minutes of the January 8, 2013 meeting? So, move?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Lorraine, do we have any disclosure of executive session votes from today?
Just that one vote. All members were present at tonight's executive session. Motion made by John Biscardan to adjourn executive session and go into opens, seconded by Linda Avanzato, and the motion passed seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. What items are to be exempted from the consent agenda? Mr. Biscardan?
Item E, I believe it's E, Behavioral Health Solutions.
Mr. Mudge?
Item D, and item G1, two, four, and five.
So, that's G1, G2, G4, and G5?
Yes, a couple of quick.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, hearing no other items, all those in favor of approving the remainder of the items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye. Could I just make a comment? I think you have to, on item F, you have a choice there.
Oh, right.
Version one is the recommendation.
Correct. Good, I'm sorry, Mr. Mudge, I should have, I remembered that we did have that. So, let's also exempt.
F.
F1.
F.
Two.
F. All right, so now, Mrs. Avanzato, is your motion on the remaining of the consent items now?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi, your second vote?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, going to the first item that was exempted, Mr. Mudge, item D.
Yes, I had sent several comments into the secretary with regard to the agenda. With this particular one, I would say that I'm concerned that our budget has not indicated the correct appropriations for fiscal year 12 and fiscal year 13. I think that should be noted in terms of what the actual appropriations were, and the submittals to the Department of Municipal Affairs should reflect what the actual budgets were. For example, I think this is for $7,43,000 for this fiscal year, and then it was pumped up to $57,813. And I think that should be represented in the column that says, you know, original budget. That budget should also include the...
So, Mr. Mudge, are you talking about the quarterly period?
Yeah, if you look at the submittals to the state, I think that we had other, the council for the first time also appropriated other funds that currently show as a zero appropriation. And I was going to bring this up at the budget committee meeting, but for example, the first time this year, the federal funds were restricted funds were $2.495 million. The...
I'm not sure where you have that figure, Mr. Mudge. Could you explain that?
Yeah, in fact, I, that was the appropriations from the town council. For the first time, in addition to the general fund, the council funded, okay, appropriated, which is, it's a benchmark now from an expenditure standpoint, $2.4 million, I've got it.
This is on the November report?
Excuse me? No, I'm going, it's on really all the reports, okay?
If I may, I think Mr. Mudge is talking about all sources of funds. This document in front of you right here is the documents provided for general funds. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I guess, but my point is, when we're sending this to the Department of Municipal Affairs, we should have all our funds in there.
Actually, I've been told by Suzanne Greshner, who is from the state, that they are looking for the general fund information. The RIDE looks for something from us that is inclusive of all funds. So, that's actually some information that came out at one of my last Riasbo meetings that was on December 17th or so.
My comments are consistent with RIDE's comments, because they also include all the funds. And the reason I'm saying that, I'm trying to make sure that, you know, we go forward with the 14 budget, is that, you know, we're not just speaking of the general fund, we're speaking of all the other funds, which amount to about, you know, four, five million dollars. And I'm not sure that, why the Department of Municipal Affairs is not looking for those, because if you look at the regulations, you know, those monies have got to be audited, and they fall under all the other, the obligations we have. So, I'd like to follow up with that and find out why we're only speaking of the general fund application.
Okay, I can take a look at that for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question. Mrs. King, is this, we're in compliance with what's required of us to submit by, what Munis is requiring us to submit, we're in compliance with that?
Yeah, and I guess the difference here is, like I said, at the last Riasbo meeting, this information that's in front of you right here, it's this monthly and quarterly report that I send to Trish Sunderland at the town, the general fund. This then gets coupled with the town information, and that goes to Suzanne Greshner at the state.
Thank you.
And that's the State of Rhode Island Budget Office as opposed to RIDE.
Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve D at this time?
Second.
All right, Lorraine, could we take a roll call vote for item D? Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
John Biscardan?
Yes.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Cheryl Clarken?
Yes.
Bob Jones?
Yes.
William Mudge?
No, because I think it's incorrect.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one, thank you. All right, that brings us to item E1. Mr. Biscardan?
Yes. First, I just want to make it clear that I'm not, this was not exempted because I don't believe this is needed. I exempted it, and Dr. Ojai, you provided me the information today, but in my opinion, I think this, the information provided to me should have been provided to everybody, along with, you know, in the packet of information, as to why this wasn't out to bid, one, and why this opportunity wasn't put out to bid, and why this certain provider was chosen. provider was chosen. Is there not a policy in place that requires a form to be filled out, in the event you want to forego the typical bid process?
A sole source provider? Yeah, that will be the form that you're referring to.
Okay.
But this is not a sole source. There are other places that could provide this service, so that would not have been an appropriate thing to fill out.
Okay, then why wasn't it put out for bid?
I think that Dr. Pizzullo can comment on that for us.
Actually, I'd like to, point of order.
Yes, Mrs. Avanzato? What's your point of order?
I'm not sure it's exactly a point of order, but I would like to ask a question of the attorney before we hear from Mrs. Pizzullo on the legality of the bidding that was just referred to.
Why don't we, why don't we hear what was done first, before we can comment on any legality? So, go ahead.
I'd like to say a couple of things, you know. I appreciate Mr. Biscardin's suggestion. You know, this is a situation where, you know, there are, there are many, you know, in this field. But this is a person that we know of. I have some, my own personal experience with this person, when I was an assistant principal in Charahoe. I know that our assistant special ed director worked with this person very much in Charahoe, and this person also works very much in South Kingstown. Dr. Pizzullo, and I'm going to ask her to come on up and talk as well, you know, is obviously very keen to, you know, what is going on out there. This is not something where we're necessarily, you know, picking, you know, the right kind of paint to put on a building, or the right kind of paper towels to use. These are people, these are programs with some very special circumstances involved. This is a person who's come very highly recommended, and is someone that, you know, someone like Dr. Pizzullo and Mrs. Perry would come in contact with on a regular basis, and their recommendation to me is, you know, all I need. You know, we didn't necessarily see this as a sole provider, and the paperwork that we have didn't really match what we're trying to do. So we're hoping that you can give us a little bit of discretion tonight to go ahead with this, with this assignment, on the basis that our two leaders in special education really have a good handle on what they're doing with this, and why this person is the right person for the job in his organization. I'll let Dr. Pizzullo talk a little bit about that.
I'd be more than happy to answer any question that any member.
The microphone. There you go.
Is this better? I'd be more than happy to answer any question that any member of the committee has, and I invite you at any time to call me, and we can always sit down or talk over the phone. This individual was chosen to provide this service for several reasons. Number one, this is not a position, nor is this a person that I would broadly seek out. I would, I would make my search very focused, because it's a very sensitive position, a lot of responsibility goes with it. This is an individual that will serve children, will serve families, and will serve our staff as well. So I needed someone here who has a proven record. And how do I find out what a proven record is? Well, one, I examine the individual's curriculum vitae very carefully, and sit down and talk with that individual, not once, not twice, three or four times, and just go over philosophy, approach, experiences, knowledge, always testing those areas. And then the other piece that I do is seek out experiences that my colleagues had in other districts. Has this individual worked for you? Have you been satisfied? It's sort of like a recommendation that we do when we hire someone. Have you been satisfied? Has it been successful? How many years has this person worked for you? And I was impressed with the response I got from my colleagues. In addition, I was also impressed with the conversations I had. And I went through several hypothetical scenarios, what if, okay, or if we're sitting talking about a child who has this type of difficulty, what might you do as a first step, a second step? So it was through that process that I made a decision to make an offer to this person upon approval of you folks. And also, it was also discussed about clinical evaluations that this individual may do. Now, by law, we have to have a clinical evaluation for certain disabilities under IDEA that we're considering, and we have to send out for that. And it's not easy to get control of that, because it depends on the clinician's schedule and timetable, when we're going to get that information back. In the meantime, we are under deadlines for IDEA to be able to return an evaluation within 60 days and act on it. But the outside clinician may not have an appointment for 60 days, just to even get started. In addition, an outside evaluator may or may not have the opportunity to commit to the school. And if someone's going to do a clinical evaluation for any of our children, I want the school to have a voice, I want the family to have a voice. So I look at someone that can work with us inside, someone who understands the parameters of a school system, and the sensitivities within a school system. And I also look at the cost, and this individual will be able to do a clinical eval for us at a significantly reduced rate than what we are getting now. So that's.
My question is, that's all great, and I'm not, and I, I don't think Dr. Ogier tried to paint me this way, but I was not casting aspersions on you or anybody else who came up with this process. My question is that, and I don't doubt the diligence that you put in to making your decision. The easiest way I can put it is, back in the day when there was paper and pencil, and I did math class, teacher said, you got to show your work. And as far as I'm concerned, I was not showing work.
Okay, I understand.
Mrs. Avanzato, and then Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I totally understand the importance of this work and the necessity for it. We on this committee asked the administration to look at, try and, to try and bring some of our students that were being serviced by out-of-district placements for special education, and try to service them here, if appropriate, in our own school system. That was going to require some supports in place. We were told that at the time. This is one of those supports. I also understand what John is saying in terms of the committee looking at our paperwork, and just seeing the rationale. It's my understanding, and I could be incorrect on this, but I know state purchases under state law, in terms of bidding, there are exceptions for professional services such as architectural, or engineering, or consultants, consultants like this, where, if you think about it, it makes sense. Putting something like this out to bid, this isn't just a money issue. You can't just get, take the lowest bidder. You're talking about someone who's going to be servicing children, has some special needs children, in a certain climate, in a certain town. So those decisions are a little bit more, have to have a little bit more touchy-feely in with the financial. Those have to be considered. So I think that's why the exception exists under state law. I would say, I agree with John, that it would have been helpful to have that information in our packet to begin with. I totally understand the need for this. I would ask, too, that we might want to look at our own bidding policy, which I helped write. So I was looking at it, and I, we could probably tighten it up a little, or at least maybe put a little bit more into it, saying that these types of issues, such as consultants, things of that nature, may not require competitive sealed bidding, such as the other kinds of contracts we enter into do.
But we know you helped write the policy. We know who to blame.
Okay, I'm blaming myself. I came forward, said, will you drop the ball on that? But state law took care of it anyway. State law supersedes our policy and is already in existence, so.
You know, and again, I don't doubt anything you're saying, Dr. Pizzullo. But when you tell me that it's a substantial savings, I would like to see how you came about that. You know, if you're bringing it up, you're opening it up, you know? Then if you're going to say it's a substantial savings, then I need to, I think it would be nice to see, again, the work that you put into it to be able to make that statement, that's all.
I certainly can make that available to you, and would welcome a meeting if we sit down and look at it. That would be great, and I could certainly show you that. I would welcome you to come to the office.
Dr. Ogier, and then Mr. Mudge.
You know, I appreciate the comments. You're right. You know, in the future, I will take full responsibility for not getting you all of the information that you needed beforehand. And a couple, you have called me about it, and we did talk about it, but, you know, to put some information, more information in your packet about how this came about, I will do that in the future. I just hope that, for tonight's sake, that, you know, this is an item that we really need to happen, and immediately. And so I would hope that you would approve this for this evening.
Mr. Mudge.
I agree with Mr. Biscardin. Everything you've said is fine, but I ask, is this individual, like, you know, providing a particular service for us? You know, is it unique, you know, what's its unique qualifications?
Yes, he is. What is unique about it is that it is now in-house, and we have control over it, and we can direct its focus, number one. Number two, the other piece that is unique is the fact that if we need a clinical eval done on a youngster, should an incident arise, and we need a clinical eval quickly, we have someone we can call on. We do not have to send out, wait a number of days, which makes it very awkward in terms of how would we proceed with this youngster and with this family.
Isn't that really the spirit of what the contract's all about? I don't believe, for example, for every psychiatrist or evaluator that comes into the, into the district we have, we should not open that up, that particular service, for bid.
Right. I believe the contract would be that we would have one person do it for, for all of us, rather than having to go out for every single one that we bid.
I understand, but still, you know, at a point in time, you have to be open and follow up contract provisions in procuring, you know, services for over $5,000, and put those things out for bid. Or if you can't, you can sole sauce, but what you're doing is, by sole saucing, you're saying, there's nobody else out in the world that can provide this service. And unless you test the market, you'll never know, like Mr. Biscardin is saying, is what the best price is, or isn't. And everything you've done is fine, is great. All my saying is, should be in writing, and if you go out on the market, let people bid on the job.
If I can respond, Mr. Mudge, you know, I hear what you're saying, and like I said, I apologize for not giving you more information and all that. But at a certain point, I also feel that, you know, we hired Dr. Pizzullo for a reason. She knows her stuff, and she's worked in this market for many years, and so has Mrs. Perry. So if they tell me that this is the right thing for special education, I trust that. And, you know, I'll get you the paperwork that you need to have. But at a certain point, you know, we've hired our administrative team because we trust in their judgment. This is not a $100,000 item. This is not a million dollar item. It's about $9,000. It's a routine kind of thing that special ed does in our district, year after year after year. I think we can give them a little bit of license to go ahead with this.
Dr. Ogier, what I'm saying is, we have policies and procedures.
I understand that, and I've addressed that.
Okay? And in fact, I can recall, two years ago, when I came on to the school committee, we had spent $25,000, $22,000 on iPads that the school department never knew about. Okay, the town council, excuse me, I mean, town council, school committee never knew about, school committee didn't authorize the purchases, yet, you know, they were procuring. And this, you know, so we have procedures, we should be following our procedures. I would also like to note on this, is what are we doing today? What did we do at the beginning of the year? Do we need, do we have a requirement for this service?
Yes, we do.
And, well, did we? How did we satisfy it up to this point in time?
It has been a little bit awkward, especially when crises arise, and we've had a number of those that we've had to face. As I said before, what's been awkward is that we've had to go outside and depend on someone else's timeline, number one. Number two, it was really difficult to have access to the family, and bring the child and the family and the school personnel together with a person that could deal with it all at once within the school. So what we were doing was sort of piecemeal, and I think it is, we'll better serve our children and our families if we can bring it all together. Number two.
That's fine. I will support that.
Let Mrs. Pizzullo finish, Mr. Mudge.
Number two, if I may, I would be very uncomfortable if I just went out broadly and said, say, look, I'm looking for a clinical psychologist. Just send me a bid, tell me what you can do. I would be uncomfortable with that, because I need to be sure that the person we bring into the schools understands the parameters of the school, understands the sensitivity of the school, and the issues, the mental health issues that they will be facing, and understands the needs of our staff, as well as the families and the needs of the children, and someone who has experience bringing all of that together. So I'd be a little uncomfortable, although there are many, many excellent clinical psychologists out there, many of my friends and colleagues. But I'm not so sure I would invite them to come in and work with us. I think that I would be uncomfortable with that, because they have strengths in different areas. That's.
Well, you know, I'm trying to help, because I support you. I mean, I support the requirement. But again, we have, we have to follow our procurement regulations.
Yes.
Okay? That's all I'm saying. I think that's what Mr. Biscardin was saying, is in these type of, all the contracts, you could say that to most anybody. You could say about a teacher.
I think that we can belabor the point, that the committee would like more paperwork, but I'd like to.
No, 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 I didn't say more paperwork. What I said is, this is not an issue with her requirement, it's how we implement the requirement and follow the contractual process. That's the issue.
And I'm disagreeing that I don't see your issue. I'm going to call Mr. Cerisi, and then I saw Mr. Jones hand up.
I haven't finished my comments, please.
I'm going to allow Mr. Cerisi.
May I finish my comments?
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Cerisi. Cerisi, what's your point of order?
I believe Mr. Biscardin's comments were appropriate, and I believe the point was made. I believe there's a request here for additional process or paperwork. I think belaboring the point, and conducting, and people up here getting on their high horses and conducting an interrogation in a public meeting is disturbing, to say the least.
This is not an interrogation.
I think the question has been raised, the concern has been raised. The superintendent got your message, he heard you loud and clear, he's going to address it. Anything beyond that is, again, it's embarrassing. Please.
Who's embarrassed?
Mr. Jones, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'll yield my time to Mr. Mudge to at least finish his comment, please.
Yeah, this is, my final, my final comment on this is, we've apparently transferred money from some of these other accounts, and this has nothing to do with you, by the way, okay? From a 99 account, we're transferring $7,500, we're transferring $2,100 from another account.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Avanzato, what's your point of order?
My point of order is, does the current comment have anything to do with the item on the agenda that we're discussing?
Oh, yeah, because it's the, it's the, how we're paying for this. How are we paying for this? The $9,600.
Mr. Mudge, we don't have any information on that.
I want a motion to end debate and call a question, please.
I don't have any.
Second.
I mean, in other words, are we taking it out of somebody else's pocketbook?
Motion to end debate and call the question. Lorraine, could you take a roll call vote, please? John Biscardin?
Yes.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
No.
William Mudge?
No.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Passes five two. And now the question, please. This is on the question on E1. Well, do we have a question on the table? I don't believe we do.
Motion on the table.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
No, since I didn't get to ask my questions.
William Mudge?
No.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
John Biscardin?
Yes.
Motion passes five two. Thank you. Thank you very much. That brings us to item F.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzullo.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify that Dr. Pizzullo did extend an invitation to people who would like to discuss this further with her. I know you more than welcome that. Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to item F. And this is the school calendars. We have our meetings in front of us, as well as two different school calendars. Dr. Ogier, would you like to talk about item number one?
Yes, I recommend that we approve the first of the school calendars in your packet. This calendar follows more closely the state workers' calendar. The state workers' calendar does not, how that would be different from our school year as we currently configure it, is that we would not. it, is that we would not be out of school for Jewish holidays or for Good Friday. Since being an administrator in the North Kingston School District, I've been the chair of two calendar committees, and Mr. Avedigian, I see you back there, you're probably here for this item, because you have been an ardent supporter of those committees and have been actively involved over the years. Couple of things have precipitated my putting this forward. One, I'm worried about the number of days that we eat up every year for emergencies and for snow. I've been now about a year and a half as superintendent, and I actually have not called a snow day, but I've called a strike day and five hurricane days. And particularly, our next door neighbor, South Kingston, they're talking about using one of their vacation weeks this year, because they lost a full week at the beginning of the year. And I think the people on the stage pretty much know this, but for the sake of the audience, we can only go so far. We can only go to the end of June with days of school, and you have to have 180 of them for the kids' sake. That's state law. So already, without any snow days yet, and so far, so good in that account, but you know, we're, we're getting to the point that if we had some kind of a significant snow event that ate up, you know, several days, we would be starting that discussion. You know, what would happen if just a couple more days were eaten up and we'd have to use some vacation time, instead of going beyond, you know, the end of June and into July for school, which we cannot do. So this would be just one more way of making sure that we get out just a little bit earlier in June and have a little bit more of a cushion in June, so that if we need things for emergencies of any kind, strikes, a school closing because of a boiler problem, you know, all of those kinds of reasons, anything you can imagine, that we would have that cushion. I also believe that it's not necessarily the job of a school department to be, we have provisions in place, and we've had for years, for people who wish to observe a religious holiday. Those are already in place, and to some extent, people use them, not all that much, but they do. And, and we go along and things are fine. So I don't necessarily feel like we need to, you know, be stopping our calendar for, you know, a number of religious holidays. And in the past few years, there's been more and more, you know, we've had primary day that the governor said, you know, we have to have as a holiday. So there's more and more things that are, that are jumping in to make us stop, you know, the progression of school. And a lot of those things, by the way, happen right at the beginning of the year. And, and that's a time when we're trying to get students back into the groove, get some rhythm going with, with them and their learning, prepare them for the state tests that happen in October, and those, those early days, we find are very valuable days to us. And so that's why I would encourage that we, we vote on calendar number one.
All right. So that is Dr. Oje's proposal. So we'll start with the, I'm first looking for a motion, and then we're looking for a discussion. Is there a motion to approve Dr. Oje's version one of the calendar?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All right. So now we'll go for discussion. I see Mrs. Avanzato, and I see Mr. Mudge. Mrs. Avanzato.
Yes, I was actually raising my hand to make the motion, but just very briefly, this, I think we've heard from several members of the Jewish community in the past few years that they were upset that Jewish holidays had been eliminated and Good Friday was still on the calendar as a holiday, and it was kind of an uneven situation. And so that, that also would sort of make things fair in that regard. But we've heard from a lot of teachers, I've also spoken to several parents who, and pretty much everyone I've spoken to says that they prefer that they just had school on these days because of all the interruptions. So that's why I would support this.
Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, my only comment would be, before we act, do you think we should, you know, we have a listserv, you know, submit this to parents for some comments, you know, again, just another input. Personally, I, you know, I would support that, but I'm just wondering if we should get some of our interested customers out there to get their input.
If I can answer that question, you know, like I said, I've been involved in a couple of committees. Those committees have done some polling of our, of our parents. And, and one thing that I noticed, and even last year, when we had a hurricane, a bunch of hurricane days, and we, we used Jewish, one of the Jewish holidays for school, a lot of the, the suggestions that came in to me from parents, and even on those early surveys, was that if we were going to use a Jewish holiday, that it would make sense to use Good Friday as well. The Christmas holiday, you know, that takes on a whole new significance in that, obviously, if you had school on that day, nobody's going to show up, you know? And, and it's, and it's a state-recognized holiday. Good Friday and the Jewish holidays are not. State workers are still working on those days. So, so I'm just suggesting that we, we follow that same kind of cultural recognition of, you know, and the only, the only difference that we would have from the state holiday is the day after Thanksgiving. That is a state workers' day, but again, that's one of those days where if we had school on that day, I can guarantee you, half of our staff and almost all of our students probably wouldn't come. So it's one of those things where you just have to kind of recognize that that's a culturally significant day in our community, and, and acknowledge that and work from there.
Yeah, I had, I have no problem with that at all, Dr. Oje, and I support that. I'm just concerned that we get, you know, the public has had an opportunity to look at this, and are we getting something in here quicker than they hadn't had a chance of feedback? That's all.
Yeah, I feel like, because of the fact of these last two committees over the last three years that we've asked, and, and people have weighed in. And, and I feel like, you know, you keep asking year after year, people get kind of tired of, of the question, you know? So I feel comfortable that I have learned what the community would find acceptable here, and I think that I'm, I'm good with this.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Now, go on.
Dr. Oje did put it out in, on the listserv prior to this meeting, is just what I was going to be talking about. I believe that Ms. Bergland forwarded to all of us a response that she had had about, basically a positive response about the calendar number one. So, and having sat on the calendar committee for a couple of times, I know this has been an issue, and I know I certainly support going to a, a religious free calendar, with my, my thought being that I, I do not want to celebrate a religion that if we, if we, I know that the Providence schools had started going on to other religious holidays other than the Christian and Jewish holidays, and, and I thought, hmm, if we want to go down that road where we're eventually adopting other holidays, it would be just better to go with no religious holidays, so we aren't having to adopt other religion. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Mudge's suggestion is a good suggestion, and I think typically I would support that suggestion. But as Dr. Oje noted, and as you noted yourself, we have had, within the last three years, I believe, two calendar subcommittees, two different calendar subcommittees, and you know, with the input from staff and students and teachers and parents and so on and so forth. So, and we've done surveys, and we've done everything but make a decision, or make a change, or respond to any of the data that's come back from those surveys. So, and I think a good point made is that, you know, people really aren't going to respond or keep being involved in these subcommittees when basically it's, it's talk, and the school committee really never responds or take an action based on the recommendation. So I think it's time for the committee to take an action, and if there's, you know, some fallout from the action where we need to revisit a decision, we can certainly revisit a decision. So.
One, one last point that I'd like to make, I should have said this right up front, but this is, I'm not, not changing my mind or anything. I just want to point out that, that this is something that is mentioned in, in the contracts that we're dealing with. So we're, we're going through our teachers' contract right now, and it would require a memorandum of agreement with both ESP and our teachers, because that, particularly for the Good Friday, is mentioned in, in part of the contract as a day off. So I don't see that as a major stumbling block, and with the committee's approval, this would be something that I would work on immediately, so that parents can be aware as soon as possible about what the calendar would be.
So we'd go down as subject to that approval?
Subject to the, you know, approvals with our, our contractual agreements.
Can I just make, you are aware that ESP, we tried to negotiate that out, and we gave them Good Friday as a holiday?
Yes, but that would have to be something we would then look at negotiating.
We'd have to get a memorandum of agreement with ESP.
Right, right.
I'm aware of that.
We're aware of that. All right, Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote? Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
John Biscarton.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Thanks. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, our next item under schedules and calendars is the policy BEAR for the schedule of meetings. And so is there a motion to approve this meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We also had a rescheduling of our meeting for the February 26th meeting to February 20th. I know Mrs. Clarkin said that she would not be able to make that date. As far as I know, Lorraine, when she took her survey, no one else said that they couldn't make it.
This seemed to be the best date for everyone that was.
So if we could have a motion to approve that rescheduling.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to personnel items. Mr. Mudge, you brought up G1.
Is that, I didn't, is that a new, is that a new unbudgeted position?
It's a replacement.
Excuse me?
It's a replacement position for someone who's left.
I must have missed that, man. Okay.
So are you looking to?
No, that's fine.
Do I have a motion to approve G1? So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Mudge, you brought up G2.
For the voluntary transfer?
Oh, no, I didn't say G2, did I?
Yes, you didn't.
Yes, you did.
1, 2, 4, and 5. All right, that's, okay, no, I.
Okay, is there a motion to approve G2?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor approving G2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mudge, you brought up G4.
Yeah, that's the, again, is this a, a unbudgeted, new unbudgeted position here? I didn't get that clearly.
All right, actually, this one was, and this one came out of, I'm sorry that Dr. Pizzullo left, but this one came out of our compliance audit with RIDE, and where, she has the information here on where this person will be covered, but it is someone that is required for the special education student.
And this is unfunded from a standpoint of grants and things like that, so that's a.
Correct.
What you're saying is a mandated increase that we're going to have to absorb in our budget.
Yes, sir.
What happens if we don't pass it?
I, we have to figure those out. That's part of our issue when it comes to special education. And if we don't have a whole lot of room in our budget, you know, these students do move into the district, and we do have to service them, and we are required to do so.
Well, this is not an, no, this isn't in school. Okay, okay. So this is, this isn't in-school district issue anyway, right, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to approve G4?
So moved.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving G4, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? G4 passes. Mr. Mudge, you brought up G5. Same answer.
Okay, which one? We had one with and one without so far. Okay. So it's the, I guess I'm looking at the comment, is the object fund transfer, we're going from one code, you know, to another code, I think, and I was kind of wondering, like you had a 5110 code, and this is a 56, which is like supply, you know, a 556, so you're transferring funds from, I guess, other services to in-house services?
Yes.
And this is going to be a full-time position then?
Yes.
And what won't we be getting now, because we have to transfer these funds from, you know, supplies or materials, whatever the thing was, a 556, 630 account?
I don't have any specific answer to that, but just unfortunately, again, something that has to be done, and we have to find out where we do it from.
Yeah, my, my question was, was, and I don't object to that, is that we're not going to get something else that we had in the budget, we're going to have to forego, I guess, and I was kind of wondering what that was.
I, I don't have a specific answer for that, you know, a particular thing that was budgeted specifically that hadn't been spent yet. It's just that now those funds are not, you're right, they're not available to be spent, but it's not, it hadn't been earmarked, as far as I understand, on a particular item. But it is unfortunately one of our realities that we do deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've had a motion to approve in a second for G5. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving G5, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the, end of the consent agenda, and it brings us to item number four, unfinished business, the appointment of the North Kingston School Committee members to the teacher negotiating team. All right, prior when we had discussed this in, I think, did we discuss this at our biennial meeting? Or it was, okay. I know that I had said that I would be on the negotiating team again if the, the committee felt they wanted me to be on it. I know Mr. Cerisi said that he would be on it. And Mr. Biscarton, there was a question of whether you were going to be on it or not?
Sure. Yeah, I'll be, I'd be happy to serve.
Was there anyone else who wanted to be on the negotiating team, that it just means that one of the other three of us would then bow out?
Is that, is there any reason why from negotiations, from a negotiation standpoint, everyone can't be on the committee?
Well, then you have to post for every meeting, because then it's, we have more than a quorum. So you have to post for every meeting, it has to then become an open meeting, and our negotiations are traditionally closed sessions, and.
I thought that Dr. Howley, one of the good things he did years ago, what he did was, he posted it, and then all the meetings would basically continue from there. But anyway, it's just a question.
Mr. Biscarton.
Bill, if you want to be on the negotiating, I'd be glad to. No, no, John, I was just, just wondering, you know, if, if the, because the reason I was saying that is, back in 2006, I think, or 2004, when we went into negotiations, the teachers went on strike, and the next thing we know, okay, we're all up, sitting at Howard, up at the Department of Labor for, you know, some 10 or 15 nights, negotiating the contract by edict of the judge, you know?
Right. And that could happen again, if that happened, where the negotiators have, the mediators and the arbitrators have subpoena power over the school committee, and back then, that's exactly what happened, Mr. Mudge. If the teachers went on strike, they would, they would serve subpoenas on every single member of the school committee, and you would sit at the labor board, building exactly what would, that's exactly what would happen. And that can still happen. I mean, the arbitrators and the negoti, and the mediators do have subpoena power, and at that point, if things are going real badly, they would subpoena the entire school committee. And so you're right, that can happen.
Mrs. Avanzato.
I'd like to offer a motion to nominate Kim and Larry and John to the negotiating team.
Second.
My second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. I'm, I'm smiling because I'm thinking, ugh, I get to do this again. So if there is nobody who is taking themselves off, and nobody who is jumping at the opportunity, let's take the vote. Lorraine, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
John Biscarton.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Bob Jones.
Yes.
Bill Mudge.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that was everything we had for unfinished business. That brings us to new business, discussion of the rotating school committee meeting at different locations.
One point I'd like to make about that is if, I like the idea, but I'm worried about the manpower and the logistics of moving all of this particular equipment and getting all of the right feeds for the wireless and everything else appropriately on a monthly basis. I think this might be something that we do occasionally, maybe on a quarterly basis, and try to hit all the schools maybe over a two-year period or something. But it seems to be plenty of work just to set it up here, as my colleague in the front row will attest. And, you know, even then, we run into some snags at the beginning of meetings that everything doesn't necessarily always work exactly the way we would want it to. So that, otherwise, if we all agree that we don't want to film the meeting, I'm all in favor of having them at every school on a regular basis. That's the only thing that I want to caution the committee about a little bit.
I see. Mrs. Avanzato and Mr. Mudge.
Yes, I was on the committee when we did the traveling roadshow to the different schools. And I'm being facetious, but it's actually a good idea, and it does, it is nice to go to the community, different communities, and have the parents be able to come out. However, I think there were, I remember it being difficult. I remember we didn't get the internet. I remember the stage was too small for all of us to fit on it. And especially, I remember difficulty in the audio and getting the meetings taped. And that's very important. I think a lot of people stay home and watch these rather than come out. So I would agree with Dr. Ogier's suggestion of doing it, you know, quarterly. It really is difficult on everyone that has to make these meetings happen, as far as from staff and helper point of view.
Casey, Mr. Mudge, and then Mr. Jones.
I think I kind of would support that, to this extent, that unless we had something unique for the particular school, then, you know, we might want to do that. You know, these things are, you know, taped and so forth and so on. So I kind of think I'd go along with what Dr. Ogier has said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I think it's important maybe to distinguish having a meeting at a different place for the sake of having it there versus, you know, I don't think there's a point of having a meeting at Hamilton or Stony Lane, you know, to go over routine business. I think the point to having it at those locations is to give that school and that unique set of stakeholders involved with that school the opportunity to perhaps give some of, you know, the committee members especially, especially those of us who are newer and haven't had exposure to all the schools, a chance for that school to maybe show off a little, to talk about some unique things that are going there that may never rise to the level of the committee, for say. Or, you know, as Mr. Mudge said, there might be something that's unique to that school, where it's the appropriate time for that to be there. You know, I'd hope as we advance to the 21st century schools that technology isn't such an obstacle to overcome that we can't hold meetings. But I would also say that, you know, like we do with the biennial meeting, you know, you have a meeting at one thing to serve one location, and then come back to a central location to take care of business. That I don't see as an obstacle to perhaps conduct part of a meeting that's focused on that school or a particular issue there. And then if it truly is a technological challenge, to reconvene and have the rest of it here. But I certainly welcome the opportunity to get and to hear from the stakeholders of that school and that location. It puts more of a face on when you're asked to say, appreciate the open classroom security issues, or there's a maintenance issue at a school, to see that firsthand. So again, I would hope that we at least take the opportunity to do that for more than just the sake of holding it at a different location.
Is there any, Mrs. Clarkin?
I have to agree with Mr. Jones. I think this would be a really good thing for the community. I think it might get more parents involved. I think it would be a great idea to have, you know, the principal of the school where the meeting could possibly be held, give a presentation about the school, similar to some of the issues that Mr. Jones raised. I understand that there are, you know, technology challenges that have to be met, but I think, you know, technology's always moving forward. It's worth a try. I'm all for, if, you know, the consensus is to do this on a quarterly basis. I'd like to see it a little more often, but if that's how we start off, you know, that would be fine. And if we could get the technology challenges in order, then maybe we could do it more often. But I think it would be a positive thing for the community, get more parents out at the meetings, and, you know, understand the different school issues a little better.
All right, Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, I kind of think we're talking along the same lines here. Perhaps what we should maybe consider is maybe not necessarily doing a business meeting or work session, but, you know, go around and visit all the schools at a PTA meeting or something, and talk to the staff, or some common, you know, meeting that, you know, each school has.
All right. Well, tomorrow night, here at the high school, they're going to be having Democracy Night, so I'm sure that you've all gotten the invitation from Mr. Vera about coming to that. Yes.
Speaking of Democracy Night, there seems to be two different times. On our agenda, it said 6:30, but on the email from Mr., was it?
Varya.
Varya, it was 7 o'clock. So I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, because I'm there tomorrow. 6:30 is when the students go to set up. 7 o'clock is when everyone else comes.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right.
All right. So this is what I think I've heard here from this, from the discussion, is that yes, people would like meetings at special locations, but they would like them for a specific purpose, that we go to a school, such as if the school was going to be having some sort, well, I don't know, but just that you want to go for a purpose. You don't need to do every meeting. And that there is the possibility that we have problems with the AV, this, I didn't hear this, but this would be my question, is if we have problems, would the committee be fine with holding the meeting without the, Lorraine, it's the video, right?
The streaming, right.
Right. It's without the streaming. Is the committee all right with that?
Well, it could be a PTO meeting or something like that, even, you know, we could, hopefully you got parents there, you know.
I think you'd get parents there anyway, if you're going to have, hold a meeting and do something special at a school.
Yeah, I guess that falls under the thing special. Yeah.
Okay. I will keep that in mind, and I will, Dr. Ogier, you've now heard with the, the committee has preference, so if you find that combination that you can be looking for, and we'll see who is our first volunteer for in the future.
Okay.
All right. I think that brings us to the end of new business. The one thing I forgot to bring up when we had calendars is I did send out an email about there is a scouting Court of Honor on January, I believe it's the 22nd. So if, after the meeting, if anybody is able to attend that, I said I would not be, please come and see me. So, all right. Lorraine, are there any other citizens' comments down there?
No one has signed up.
Okay. All right. We have, we don't usually, we don't discuss our reports or correspondence, so that brings us to the end of the meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great. Thank you, everyone.